Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April ninth Board of Education meeting. We're calling the meeting to order. We have a tobacco policy in place. There is no smoking within 100 feet of any school building. Please rise for the pledge. District Clerk, will you please call roll? Trustee Jerome?
Here.
Trustee Mitchell Morale?
Here.
Trustee Goodrich?
Here.
Trustee Ramondo? Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Here.
Trustee Story?
Here.
Trustee Bishop?
Here.
Thank you. And our first order of business is the welcome from Bennett Principal, Mr. Gabriel Bono.
Good evening, everyw- wow, sorry, I'm so sorry. That was a setup. Good evening, everyone. How are you? Welcome back to Bennett. I hope you guys had a wonderful spring break. So good to see you. I know you want an update, but first I just wanna put President Bishop on the spot. I know she always likes to do that. So I have a question for you, President Bishop. What did the moon bring to the beach yesterday for the solar eclipse?
Um, sunscreen?
Some block. Well done. You are a smart cookie. Well done, President Bishop. Excellent job. Excellent job. Um, you get to return the favor after I'm done. So what's going on in Bennett? Um, tomorrow starts our ELA exams. Um, the state did it differently, in case you don't know. Uh, they gave us a win- a large window to administer ELA in math, along with fifth grade science, which is new this year. Um, ELA starts tomorrow. We've really been, um, my world has been dominated with, um, preparation for next year. Um, I've been to Phoenisha, I've met with Phoenisha teachers, um, I've acted on behalf of the transition team and the stakeholders, only to then unact by some of the recommendations. Um, but I'm trying to meet their needs. I have intentions of meeting with every single Phoenisha teacher to make sure and ensure they have the materials they need for the rooms they're going to have. Last night, I met with the Phoenisha PTA. That was a lovely meeting. Thank you, Phaedra. Um, just to answer questions and put out accurate information. I've partnered with the Phoenisha PTA and the Bennett PTA because they have the same people carrying the loads for both schools to help, um, the garden. There's gonna be a garden at Bennett, for those of you who don't know. And if you look outside the window there, you can see the, uh, Kyle Harges, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, has already started to help to prep work that we're going to, when are we gonna do that? I think February 20th, 20th, 21st, that weekend? April. What did I say? February would be a bad time to start a garden. So yeah, we're gonna go with, uh, in the next two weeks, we're gonna be working over the weekend to build a garden. And we're gonna transpose what's over there to over here. I'm gonna just give, um, a lot of recognition to Janice Thierry, who's heading up and leading that charge. Um. That, that's, that's about it for my report. And I know it seems short, but I can assure you, it's overwhelming right now. Do you have any questions for me at all? I do have one more announcement I should share with all of you. Um, we are gonna have a special chorus concert on Thursday, April 25th. Also, the Chamber Ensemble will be there as well. Um, we kinda moved it up, hoping that, um, one of our music teachers can still conduct that performance because, um, she's expecting anytime soon. And if you see her, you'll know why we moved it up. We wanna have the concert. Questions for me?
Not a question, but, um, I did notice on social media that there is a crowdsourcing fundraiser to support the Bennett Garden. And, um, I encourage any trustees who wish to, uh, support that cause to do so. And, um, will there be birthday cake on the 20th and the 21st?
The 20th?
On the 20th?
No, that's not my birthday.
When's your birthday? April tw- okay, alright, there'll be birthday cake.
No, it's not on the approved list. We can't have that sugar.
It's a weekend.
Well done. You zigged me right back. Well done. Any other questions? I wish you a glorious meeting. Good luck to all of you. But just wanna remind you, you could get out quickly and enjoy some of the last beautiful moments of this gorgeous day. That's up to you, though.
Thank you, Mr. Bono. Uh, next on our agenda, item 3.01, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, Stephanie Laffin, will present the sixth grade social studies textbook adoption.
Thank you, John. Thanks, everybody. Alright, good evening, everyone. Um, so today I just wanted to share a bit about the sixth grade social studies textbook adoption, which, um, if you take a look on the next slide, you can see the team that worked, uh, to make a decision on that. We have a, our sixth grade team, uh, both regular ed and our special ed teachers worked in collaboration to find what they thought was a good fit for their students. And also, um, Cory Cavallaro and James Grady, our seventh and eighth grade social studies teachers, worked in collaboration with them, as well as Mr. Jedana, our middle school principal. So you can see kind of a discussion of the process, um, that they went in, meeting in January, February, and March, really looking for a series that would support all students and, um, be a great resource that all students could utilize and something that teachers could, uh, really make the most of all the resources that were, um, available. There were two companies and, um, that were reviewed and considered, and the team, um, agreed on the McGraw-Hill Discovering Our Past to the Eastern Hemisphere. And there is a New York-specific textbook that that company uses, uh, specific to New York State standards, which is very good. Um, they have both printed and electronic versions. This, uh, sixth grade is, was very, uh, a hard copy version is something they really felt was very important. And believe it or not, a hard copied textbook, they are getting harder and harder to find. Obviously, there's a great expense to those, and it certainly comes over to the, uh, those who purchase it, but it's just a lot easier to build a dynamic online text version. However, um, you know, within their expertise and experience with our students, they felt like they really needed that hard copy version as well. They still have access to an online version, but it's something that they really, um, they really looked for. They were very happy with the primary source documents, the videos, and all of the, um, options provided to modify the work as it was needed. Um, they also have a, uh, Spanish version and the ability to level the reading, um, level as needed for learners who might wanna, uh, we might wanna adjust that at the same time. Each lesson really focused on critical thinking and technology, as well as reading skills. And they were, you know, it was highly recommended. This is something, just so you know, seventh and eighth grade teachers do not have a current textbook series. They have been longstanding teachers in the district, and they have really just kind of assembled their own as teachers who are long-term are, that is, is very likely, especially when there's not a common textbook assembled. But they have met and reviewed and are in support of this particular, um, this particular source. I really like the, um, focus on and the option for project-based learning, which I thought was, um, a really great option to have and something to really lean into for, for our students who learn best in that way. The link on the next page was something, um, just as a hot link, you can click on that. You can look at the sixth grade social studies framework, which you have content and skills all specifically focused on in sixth grade. And again, this is a New York version of the textbook, so it really does work to, um, to support that. And of course, across the board, we are always working on literacy skills, always working on critical thinking skills. And that's something regardless of class, we, we work, we, we work at. One other thing I wanna mention, um, our sixth grade will also be implementing the Inspire Science Series, which is the same textbook adopted last year by the Board on August 8th for eighth grade. So that is a continuation, and it will fit really seamlessly with the middle school resources in support of that curriculum. So as far as next steps, um, following, uh, your approval, we will move forward with the ordering process so that all the books are ready to go for September. Provide any professional learning that's available for teachers, just to really become familiar with the text and work with them to continue to revise curriculum to provide the most engaging, enriching learning experiences we can for our students. Any questions?
Trustee Lynch?
Thank you, Superintendent Laffin. I was curious, how does the Assistant Superintendent Laffin, forgive me? How does the process typically start? Is it like an audit that's done every set number of years? Or do the teachers say, "We're ready for a new curriculum"? What is the impetus for changing the, the books?
This is, um, teacher-led, really, when it comes to a point where they feel like they need another resource to move forward. Or there's, um, it, this is a good time, obviously, moving forward with them to be able to really have a common focus on social studies. And I think with just an opportunity to really strengthen their resource. Because remember, our sixth grade teachers are not specifically content-certified in any one thing. They are, uh, and all sixth grade teachers next year are teaching social studies. It is a common, uh, um, class within all of them. We, one teaches math, one teaches science, two teach ELA, reading and writing, and then they all teach social studies. So, um, also, I think just really important to have a, a common text and resources when you have multiple teachers teaching the same thing.
Any other questions for Ms. Laffin? Thank you very much, Ms. Laffin. Excellent. Excited about that curriculum. And our next presentation is from Monica LeClara, our Assistant Superintendent for Business, and she'll present the Superintendent's recommended budget.
Thank you very much. So we are here, um, looking at, whoa, what happened? Did I do that? I touched something. I should know better than to touch something. John knows me too well. Okay, um, so here we are, um, Superintendent's recommended budget. And I am going to start with where we are with the state budget. So as you can see, um, we've had budget extenders in place through Friday, April 5th, Monday, April 8th, and now Thursday, April 11th. So we still do not have a state budget. So, but, um, following the legislator's departure from Albany, the governor did provide a brief budget update. And in her comments, she did note that some of the foundation aid changes she provoked, proposed would not end up in the final budget, but rather that a process would be put in place to provide for formula changes in the following year. This morning, um, she also mentioned, um, a temporary retune on the cuts, while still defending them as appropriate for districts where enrollment has plunged, um, or that are holding reserve funds. But rather than push for restrictions this year, she said the aid formula will be studied further so that it can be updated for next year's budget. So, um, we're hopeful. Nisba also put out a co- a comment that, um, you know, beyond her comments, that the understanding is that the legislature has made progress on the convincing the governor to drop her proposed safe harmless cuts, but that she continues to push for her inflation adjustment proposal, which actually affects all schools, but obviously would not affect us as much as the whole harmless. So that's where we are with the state budget. So with that being said, we have pretty, we're pretty confident that we will at least retain for the 24, 25 year in revenues what we have for the 23, 24 year. So that is what this revenue, um, projection, uh, presents you. So it's, um, a $1.48 million increase with about a 2.55% increase. It does carry a tax levy of 3%, which is less than our 3.65 tax cap. I know in past, last year, for example, we, we held to a 2% tax levy. Unfortunately, it, it would not be fiscally responsible to go to a 2% knowing that the governor is going to be cutting our state aid in future years. We need to, she's basically, what she is saying is that because we are, are allowed to levy this much in taxes, and this is what the tax cap says to levy, that's what we need to levy because she's going to be reducing our state aid because we're allowed to levy this. So it's, it's an unfortunate situation, but this is where we are. Just to let you know, what we're, what we would be looking at if we did not have any foundation aid restored, we would, um, be looking at a decrease, of course, I forgot parentheses there, my apologies. We'd be looking at a decrease of 1.2 million or a decrease of 2% even with going to the tax cap of 3.65%. Again, our hope, fingers crossed, it doesn't happen. So what we're here for tonight is what is the Superintendent's recommended budget for 24, 25? I think sometimes one of the hardest things to understand is that the Board's job and the voters' job is to vote on an expenditure budget. They don't vote on the revenue, they don't vote on the taxes. However, they go hand in hand. In most years, it's very easy. We know what the state's giving us, we know what our taxes need to be based on what the state is giving us, and it marries. This year is a, is definitely a little different. So, um, the budget that I'm, that Superintendent McLaren and I are recommending for you to approve and for the voters to approve is one that includes everything that we currently have to support our students. It is, um, it's all about education, and that's why we're here. So, um, I'm sure there aren't any surprises. Our largest increase is transportation percentage-wise. Dollar-wise, it's employee benefits. That is, uh, an unfortunate situation when you, um, you know, when you have the, the benefits that we give. Not that it's unfortunate that we give them benefits, that's not what I mean. It's just that it is a much larger dollar increase. We are gonna see a decrease in instruction, and again, that is really due to the many retirements that we got and, um, being able to really look at the retirements to see who needs to be replaced and who doesn't need to be replaced. Really looking at our systems, and, um, I have to give Assistant Superintendent Allison kudos, additional kudos. Everybody gets kudos, but she gets additional kudos, 'cause that's a tough job. So we're looking at a little over a million dollar increase, so a budget increase of about 1.64% compared to this year. So usually what we do at this point is, okay, we know what our projected revenues, what are the projected expenditures, so how much of appropriate fund balance do we need to use? So if everything is rosy, we're looking at about $2.7 million of appropriate fund balance. If it's not, we're looking at 5.5 million. Now, obviously, I would never recommend to the Board that we use $5.5 million of fund balance. That would decimate us. So that is when, if we for some reason do find ourselves in a situation where our revenues do not meet expectations, then we would have to look at corresponding reductions. And those are things that we had talked about in the, in the previous meeting areas, that some BOCs and, and some things like that. We do have some, uh, transfer to capital work in the budget, which we do generally every year. So for next year, um, Kyle has requested money in order to fix the corridor ceiling in the middle school, high school, kind of by the guidance office, um, money to upgrade the Route 28 crosswalk. I'm sure when you drive in, you see those not-so-lovely cement barriers. Our goal is to get rid of those and put something a little prettier there. Uh, some parking lot repair, really just kind of some patching the middle school, high school. And then, um, we also talked about leaving some additional, um, support money in there as needed for the middle school and the Bennett transition. Knowing it's the first year that sixth grade will be in the middle school, the first year that will be 2K, K4 and a K5. We wanted to make sure that we had the resources available if for some reason there's something that, you know, we didn't think of, 'cause unfortunately, until they're here, we don't always know what, you know, it's the old saying, "You don't know what you don't know." So, um, so we have that in there as well. So we also, as I mentioned, have the second prop- the proposition number two, which will be for a use of up to 1.95 million of reserve funds. Again, that is going to hopefully not be needed. But in case we need it to support our current projects, the high school generator, the, uh, Woodstock Phoenisha exterior doors, the security vestibule that is, um, that we're looking to install at the middle school, high school, along with the cafeteria canopy in the middle school, high school, and then also a new serving line for the middle school, high school, 'cause we will have more kids that'll be going through that line. And, um, it is neat, it is necessary. And again, any unused funds will just get returned to the, back to the Capital Reserve. So one of the requirements is to show you the percentage of, uh, budget components that make up our budget. So as you can see, as I've mentioned many times, uh, instruction and, uh, and employee benefits makes up a majority of it. General support, three and a half, operations and maintenance, a little over five and a half. And transportation took a big hit, it's, it's at 10%. Just as a side note, um, the employee benefits, we are currently, um, covering 252 active employee health insurance plans. We are covering 353 retiree health insurance plans. So another requirement is the three-part budget. So New York schools, uh, must by law divide the budgets into three components, administrative, capital, and program. And then each year, we must show you and the voters, um, how much each portion has increased in rela- in relation to the whole budget. So as you can see, capital went from 8%, 8.2% of the budget to 9.2%. Administration went from 9.29 to 10, and program went down from 82 to 80. Now, while that may look like we're putting more in administration, more in capital, what it actually means is because the program budget is such a large piece, that the program budget is actually going up dollar amount by more, it's going up by 728,000, whereas the administrative piece is going up by 162, and the capital piece is going up by 112. But because that 728 is such a smaller piece of that big program budget, that's why the percentage of overall is going down. But you can see that administrative is not just administrators. It includes our legal, it includes our insurance, it includes, um, BOCs, um, and all our, our data stuff. Capital includes the school bus purchases, the debt service, facility costs, utilities, maintenance, and then all the custodial salaries and benefits. And program, obviously, teachers, TAs, paraprofessionals, and all of the associated costs with that. So total increase for 23, from 23, 24 to 24, 25 is, like I said, just a little over a million. So what will the voters see? The voters will see Proposition 1, to approve a budget of $62,325,550. And then they will also see a proposition, um, authorizing us to expend a maximum amount of 1.95 million from the 21 and 23 Capital Reserves to fund any additional costs that I mentioned, along with the middle school, high school serving line. Another thing that we're required to show you is what would happen if the district ended up on contingency budget. So contingency budget was completely different about 10 years ago, maybe even a little less. So once the tax cap came into, um, came into play, contingency budget basically said, "You can pretty much do whatever you want, but you can't raise your taxes any more than you did the previous year." So as you can see, if we were on a contingency budget, we would only be able to levy the 23, 24 amount, which is the $47,013,137. And since we're looking at, I had two different, um, tax levy options, we would basically need to cut between 1.3 and 1.7 million dollars in order to meet that contingency budget. The other things that happen in a contingency budget is you cannot buy any equipment. So we have about $450,000 of equipment in the budget. We would have to cut that. And then another kind of small, interesting piece is that the administrative component part of the budget cannot change as a percentage of the budget. So where I showed you here, administrative budget for this year is 9.29. If we're on a contingency budget, we would have to reduce the administrative budget to 9.29. So tho- those are the fun little, oh, and then we would also have to charge. We have to charge, uh, for use of our buildings, state aid. So in addition, on the, on the ballot will be two Board trustee seats, both starting with a term on July 1. They're three-year terms. And the petitions will be due, um, to our lovely District Clerk by Monday, April 22nd, 5:00 PM. And it does require District resident signatures on the, uh, on the petitions. So what's left? My recommendation is, is that the next Board meeting, we adopt this budget. We will have to also approve the property tax report card. And then, um, we will also be voting on the BOCs administrative budget at the next meeting. We can wait till April 22nd. Um, I don't think we need to, but again, that's the Board decision. We will have the public hearing on May 7th. We will then have the budget vote and Board elections on May 21st. We will then have the budget vote and board elections on May 21, and then hopefully, we will not need to do a budget revote on June 18. And that is the presentation for tonight. Any questions?
Trustee Goodrich?
Thank you. Great, can you hear me? Great report, thank you very much. So, I guess the bottom line here is, you're not going to exceed the tax cap, so we don't have to have a 60% to pass the budget, correct?
Any other questions?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I'm accurate in my assumptions, and others may have a similar, just need the clarification. But in terms of the fund balance recommendation, as you said, this figure from, I'm on slide six, of 2.7 to 5.5, is contingent on our projected revenues and our projected expenses above it, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And the revenue is the one we don't know because that's what we're waiting for from New York State?
Correct.
Okay. So, let's assume we get a budget by the 11th. We come back next week, you will have given us a firm number to vote on.
Yes.
Okay. But in our preparation, until that, we get that revenue number, we can assume that we'll try to fall as close to the 2.7
Correct.
As we can to balance the budget.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. Okay.
Hi. I have two questions that maybe are obvious to people who have done this before. But contingency budget, is that if the budget doesn't pass?
Correct, if the budget fails. My apologies, you're right, I just.
Right. And then the other question is just, is that, is that what the budget revoted? You kind of redo it, and then everyone votes again?
So, if the, I guess I should, actually, I think this slide may have said it, but I probably went too fast, and I apologize for that. So, if the budget fails, then the board has the option of either resubmitting the same budget in June, submitting a separate budget, a different budget, reducing it or whatever, or they can go straight to contingency. So, the board actually has those three options if the budget fails at the May 21 ballot.
I'm just curious about the history of the contingency budget. Many decades ago, maybe not many, when the budget failed, we did not have sports. When did that change, do you know?
It changed about the time, I mean, I think you could always have sports. I think the issue was really the dollar amount that you needed to cut to get to contingency. Obviously, you want to affect instruction as little as possible. So, if we're looking at millions of dollars in cuts, sometimes sports is what ends up getting cut because it's not an important, not that it's not important, but it's not important to the instructional day of the students. And I see Superintendent McLaren has something to add.
I just wanted to add, I started in the district in the fall of the 2004, '05 school year. That was the last year that we had a contingency budget. We did have a subsequent budget failure on the first vote, and that had to do with a large parcel issue many years ago, but thankfully, the community has been very supportive of our budget.
I guess, just in the same vein, I was wondering how often it doesn't pass. So, you're saying it pretty much hasn't not passed since like 2005?
So, statistically, schools that stay within the tax cap have about a 99% pass rate. And I will tell you that if a budget fails, it's very rarely about the money.
I just have a quick question. In terms of voting on the 16th and not waiting until the 22nd, is there any reason we should be concerned about voting on the 16th?
I don't think so. I mean, everything we've seen out there is, we will get it this year, but then we will really need to plan. And this is going to be, it's going to be hard. It's going to be a hard couple of years because, you know, we're getting, believe it or not, we're getting a lot of savings for the next year's budget because of all the retirees and with closing Phoenisha. We're not going to have that the following year. So, it's going to actually be harder to build a budget in the future years without the state aid, but we will do it.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, great, thank you so much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Item 4.01, the superintendent will report district news.
Good evening. So, we are in the unique situation of having experienced an earthquake, a snow day, and a solar eclipse in the past week, and today it was 76 degrees and sunny. So, I want to thank everyone for your support and understanding as we have navigated these unusual situations. Barring any additional weather surprises, we will extend the Memorial Day holiday weekend by one day, and school will not be in session on May 24. So, that would be lovely, barring any surprises. This just in, the date for homecoming, 2024, has been set. It will be on September 28, so mark your calendars. Everyone probably knows we have the musical happening this weekend. You can attend on Friday or Saturday evening at 7:00 PM or on Sunday at 1:00 in the afternoon. They will be, our students will be performing the School of Rock, and I'm sure it will be a wonderful production, so if you can, please attend and support our incredibly talented students. Many of our student artists are being featured in an art exhibition titled Future Voices at SUNY Ulster. The gallery there showcases the work of a number of Ulster County high schools, including Antioa. Our students have over 35 works of art in the show. SUNY Ulster alumni artist and gallery owner, Allison Constant of the Art Barn Kingston, is the juror and guest curator for this exhibition, and the show runs from April 5 through the 19. Assistant Superintendent Laffin and I were able to attend the opening and see the artwork, and we can attest that it is really amazing how talented these young artists are. There were any number of pieces that I would happily bring home and hang in my home because they're amazing. Once again, the Meet, Greet, Meet will be on Monday, May 6, from 5:30 to 7:30. Many of our local restaurants are participating. There will be a silent auction that will benefit the Phoenisha Farewell Fair. Admission is free, and each hors d'oeuvre will be $3, and the proceeds from the hors d'oeuvres will benefit the Bel Air Bash. We heard today from Principal Dedana that the middle school will be holding an activity for the fifth, sixth, and seventh grade students, a combined kickball game in the middle school this spring. It will take place during the day and will be a fun activity and a way to bring the students who will be in the middle school next year together for their first kind of joint activity. And then, we wanted to make one clarification. In last Friday's Hudson Valley One article, there was a misunderstanding by the journalist regarding one of Ms. Leclair's comments from our last meeting. The paper is quoting her as saying, because of the high equalization rate in Woodstock, we're seeing a lot of non-payment from Woodstock. And really, what Ms. Leclair was actually saying was that we're seeing a lot of taxpayers who paid taxes, but after paying the taxes, the school taxes, they then challenged their assessments, and due to the equalization rate and when their home was purchased, many of them have prevailed and then were owed a refund on their taxes. So, the refund comes out of the school district's general fund budget. So, for example, someone who had, a specific example that actually happened, someone had purchased a home in 2023 for 1.5 million dollars, but because of the 46.5% equalization rate, the taxes for the '23, '24 school year were assessed at, the value of the house was 3.2 million. So, it was doubled, and they paid $25,000 in taxes. This property owner then challenged their assessment, and they prevailed, so the tax bill was then reduced to $11,600. So, they were entitled to a refund by the district of $13,390. So, that is one of the larger refunds and is just an example, but the district has processed almost $40,000 of refunds since December. So, we just wanted to clarify that we were not saying that people were not paying their taxes because that's how it read in the paper. We wouldn't want to say that because our homeowners are very diligent and pay their taxes and then follow the process. And sometimes, because of the way the process is laid out, we have to refund the taxes to them when they prevail. So, that's it for my news today.
Any questions for Superintendent McLaren? Okay, and now, Superintendent is going to present the information that can be found on our Antioa School District website.
Oh, thank you, John. You're the best. Ooh, yikes. So, I know we have been doing a lot of work and trying to put more information on our website for our community to access, so I wanted to point out one item. People may have been receiving our Board Briefs emails that have been coming out monthly, and they are being loaded here under Board Briefs. The one that went out yesterday hasn't been put up yet, but for anyone who's looking and wants to look back at the history, they can be found right here on the School Board webpage. And then, our Soaring to New Heights, Optimizing Antioa webpage actually has a lot of great information, and we hope people are utilizing this page. So, we are keeping our spreadsheet of action steps with our key of all the wonderful things that have been happening. And I just made note that I need to add a couple of things to April, actually. So, that spreadsheet is updated regularly. And then, we have our enrollment data, which I don't know if everybody has noticed this, we have all of our historical enrollment, and then each month, as our enrollment is updated, this column, or this row is updated each month as we produce our enrollment reports, which can also be found on the webpage. In addition, this is the enrollment by town, zip code, and building from last year, and then based on a request, we updated it for the current year. And then, this is our enrollment projection for next year for the two buildings. And then, we have a way to sign up to get the district emails, which is, we've gotten, I think we are up to 56 people who are receiving the board email, which is wonderful. And then, we have additional information down here, and there is a way to submit a question. So, we have created the FAQs, and we've had two questions submitted, so we are going to gather questions as they're submitted and add them to the FAQs kind of in a chunk. Anything else? So, here is our, I'm sorry, here is our FAQs. So, people can click on there and read through all of the information that we've gathered here. And then, as I said, as we get additional questions that are submitted, we will add them to that document moving forward. Is there anything else that anyone thinks is worth noting? I hope people are finding this a very helpful page, but if we have additional suggestions for information that can be put out there, we'd be happy to look at that.
Thank you, that was very helpful. Oh, yes, please.
Oh, there I am. I just want to really encourage people to use this as a resource. We get asked a lot of questions as board members, always happy to answer them, but there's also granular pieces to the whole thing that we, I can't pull out from my head at any given moment, and it's really a great place to just get yourself familiar. It's dense, there's a lot of information, but it's also so important for our district, for the people who live here to know about and what's going on, and we really are trying to get that information out there and accessible to everyone. And especially the superintendent, thank you.
Trustee Goodrich?
I just want to say thank you to the Communications Committee, Trustee Bishop, Trustee Hemingway Lynch, and Trustee Jerome. So, I will thank you very much. A lot of work went into that, so, along with the superintendent.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Student Representative Report, and Sophie is not here yet. She won't be here till about 7:00, so we'll just come back to that when she arrives. Any board district news to report?
So, I was asked by our president, Trustee Bishop, to attend the Town of Olive Comprehensive Housing Workshop, and just wanted to give you a brief overview of what went on there. So, the Town of Olive does include our high school, Boysville, and housing is kind of very important because this is where our employees come from, and they need affordable housing, so. So, the introductions were from La Bella Associate Staff and also a subconsultant for environmental planning. So, La Bella Associates have been hired to work with the Town of Olive under Ulster County Smart Communities Initiative to develop a comprehensive housing plan. So, the first phase is to engage residents by scheduling workshop in four different hamlets, and so they're going to get feedback from, from the community on what they want for a housing plan. And then, the next phase, after completing a comprehensive plan, is to look at the current zoning laws, housing codes, short-term rental laws, to try to encourage, you know, affordable housing. One of the, so, here's some socio-demographics that they had there on their list. 19% of Olive is renter-occupied, 81% owner-occupied. Some may be seldom used by the owner as a vacation home. As somebody pointed out in the audience, he's one of five owner-occupied houses, but he's on his street, but he's the only one that lives there full-time. Everybody else comes up once in a while on a weekend, right? They also mentioned that they want to, they have no trouble having developers come in and build million-dollar homes, right? That's, but obviously, that's not going to solve the affordability problem. 70% of the renters are housing burden, and 20% of the homeowners are, with a mortgage, are housing burden, so. And I gave Superintendent a complete list of their, all their foils there, so. So, that's kind of the highlights. Thank you.
I can include this in the update on Friday, so everybody can have it.
Thanks, Trustee Goodrich. Any other news? Trustee Jerome?
I wanted to do a shout-out to you, Trustee Goodrich, and say thank you for going. You have a very keen eye for numbers and details, and so I'm really glad that you were reporting on that, so thanks.
Any other, any other news? Okay, so on to item seven point zero one, acceptance of minutes. The Board of Education hereby approves the minutes of the March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting. May I have a first? Trustee Jerome, second? Trustee Story? We'll vote. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, great, that's unanimous. Thanks, everybody. On to item eight point zero one, under discussion and possible action. The Board of Education hereby approves the school calendar for the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year as attached. May I have a first? Trustee Goodrich, second? Trustee Story? And we'll vote. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, great, that's unanimous, too. Thank you so much.
I just, as a quick comment, it was, I just wanted to appreciate the administration's willingness to move the superintendent days to accommodate transition, moving those important days and the requests that I had, and I just wanted to appreciate that. Thank you.
And also the twenty-third thing, I think will make a huge difference for everyone.
Yes, thank you administrators. Okay, before we move on to item nine point zero one, I'd like to propose that we add an agenda item, and it's something that I actually forgot to add when we had agenda setting, and Trustee Lynch reminded me, and I think it's important to add this if the board agrees. Trustee Lynch had asked us twice and reminded us at the last meeting that she would like to discuss ways that we may be able to centralize the two administrate, the two elementary populations through activities and things like that while the long-term planning and implementation process is ongoing. So may I have a first to add an agenda, add that agenda item? Trustee Mitchell Morrell, second? Trustee Jerome? And we'll vote. Trustee Jerome? I'm sorry, any discussion before we vote? Trustee Goodrich?
Could you give me a detail of what that might include?
Are you okay with the vote? Okay, okay. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Thanks, everybody. So, Trustee Lynch, are you comfortable kind of starting us off?
Yeah, sure, thank you, and I appreciate the space. It's just been something I've been thinking a lot about, because in all of our briefings, we've had an appropriate amount of attention on the long-term goals around educational excellence, and the committees that have been established have helped us understand, and obviously the update tonight from Mr. Bono helps us understand the amount of energy and attention going into the transition focused on the educational excellence for our elementary students. I was curious if it would be appropriate to just talk through some of the other goals that we had put forward as a, in terms of the long-term plan for a central campus around the culture and climate of the elementary schools, which was a real, in my recollection of the debates last year, you know, was a real big piece of why we need to centralize the school. And I'm curious if they're, in the spirit of, similar to what we did last year with the ad hoc committee, if there's a discussion to be had around ways in which we can also support not only educational excellence, but improved climate and culture for our students. To answer your question, Trustee Clark, or Trustee Goodrich, I was thinking a lot, a ton of ideas, because I spend also some time on the PTA for both schools, and while they will continue to do great work to support the children, the community, and the teachers, I also think we have a responsibility as a board and as a district to also see this through, because we made this change. And frankly, in the next three years, there's a cohort of kids between kindergarten and fifth grade who are going to go through a lot of change at a time where their teachers are already dealing with a lot of change. And so I think we have more we could do to be thinking about ways in which we ensure that these, this particular cohort of kids have also a positive experience. And so while our job is not at all to focus on implementation, and I respect that, I'd like to create the space for the administration to feel that they can also be putting the same level of energy on that, those issues, as they are in their current committees around the transition.
And I think when you mentioned this at the last board meeting, I believe it was that time, you mentioned something like, you know, maybe combined, combined field trips or things like that as an example of, of being able to combine maybe a grade level, like, so the second graders go on a trip to, I don't know where, and all of the second graders go and their teachers go as well.
Yeah, thanks. And again, I know that treads on implementation, so I really just, I posit it as an example of what I'm talking about, but could we be thinking about new opportunities? For example, you know, leaning on local partners in the district who also specialize around kids, like we do with, through the Watershed Program, you know, or we do through the Olive Recreational Basketball Team, that things that bring the children together from across the district that have, we've seen have been successful. Could we bring in more theater programs, arts programs? Could we work with the Seawakamano Campus? Could we work with other local partners to be able to build new and different, and sort of therefore exciting additive benefits for these young children to come together and forge the kind of relationships that we hope the next cohort of kids will have after a central campus is realized? Because frankly, I think we all know this, but some of these kids that transitioned into Bennett will only have two years at Bennett. And we've already said that that's a detriment for those children. So what are we doing to support the, deepening the connections with staff and with each other and the kids in the community, because we've made these changes that will affect these kids? Some of the kids in kindergarten went to one's campus, and now next year they're coming to a new campus. There's a lot of transition that's happening at every level, but I think, while I know we're all aware of it, I think there's a lot we could be doing now if we started to bring more opportunities to these kids that would feel like a real bonus or an additive thing. Even just, you know, if we could even open the gym through the winter months on the weekends and bring kids, give kids a safe place to be together. Again, I know these have costs, but I'd just like to have a safe space to have some of these conversations.
Thank you. I was going to call you Trustee Allison. Amanda.
I've been called lots of names. You know, I think, just to, just to jump in, I think it's a great conversation to bring back to our instructional leaders in our building to get their stakeholder, their input and get the feedback from their stakeholders, their teachers, their teaching assistants, and their staff. I think we have so many incredible talent in our, in our district and so many resources. I think that if we had the opportunity to think creatively, I think there's a way that we can do that and also tie in academics and curriculum, you know, I'm thinking, you know, talking about pen pals and writing programs and different things, and with our use of technology, thank you COVID for Google Meets and Zooms, there's a lot that we can do to kind of bridge the gap. But I think it's a great conversation to start with our building leaders and kind of start thinking together about how we could kind of build those opportunities naturally.
Thank you, thank you. Trustee Story?
Before Trustee Allison, Assistant Superintendent Allison jumped in, I was going to say, I'm, there's lots of ideas that is being thrown out, but it's really not appropriate for a board, a board discussion. This is, these ideas are more administration and in-house, as much as the board wants to have this discussion, that's, this is day-to-day operation and does not fall in the purview of the board. So we need to let our administrators and our teachers and our staff do their jobs. You know, this is, as much as I'd love to continue on this conversation, we have to let our administration do.
Can I ask just a question on that, Trustee Story? So where does the line fall between helping to hold our administration accountable for the transition and having a conversation like this? Like, how, where does that line, just for our understanding?
For everybody's going to figure out what their own thing is right, but I'm not going to tell you what to think. You know, what their, what your opinion is, your opinion, but.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about our role, because I appreciate what you're saying, and I thought a lot about that.
Our role is not to get into the administration, to get into the weeds.
Right, but we.
We're supposed to stay at thirty thousand feet.
And hold them accountable for the implementation of this transition.
Asking questions, we sit here at the board, board table, ask questions of our administration or RFIs, and ask, that's how we ask for accountability. You know, ask, how is this going about? But for us to say, we want this, or we, I can't tell a principal how to run their building.
No.
And the board can't either, and that's what it's kind of getting into the weeds of us having these discussions.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
May I interrupt just for a second? I happened to notice that while Assistant Superintendent Allison was speaking and while Trustee Lynch was speaking, Superintendent McLaren was taking notes, and she was jotting down all the great ideas that were being discussed. And I think that it is appropriate for the board to say at this table that we support, you know, maybe enhancing the opportunities that, that may be separate, completely separate and different for the elementary schools, that if there's an opportunity to combine the students for, you know, different activities, different events, that, that we would support it as a board.
I think, there. I think potentially also there would be an opportunity to create next year possibly a board goal, a district goal regarding creating a combined culture and climate that we would then implement, but we can certainly start having those discussions now.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
I was going to say, oh yeah, like, I do think there's some built-in already, like that stream thing at a show cam, I don't know if your kids are going, or like soccer, definitely, and like, even like, one or two more events would almost, like, more school sanctioned maybe would push it over the edge for them to form more connections. Like, I think it is kind of almost there, in my opinion, like, I know my kids know people from Phoenisha just from going and stuff like that, especially if you're the type of kid that participates and stuff like that. I remember we had the Dare Dance, and like, it was literally once a year, and we knew Phoenisha kids much better as a result. I think you're totally right. And I also think, bigger picture, we're not planning the events, obviously, but we're just saying, wouldn't this be a good idea? Encouraging it from thirty thousand feet above. So I think it's a great idea.
Trustee Goodrich?
So when we say to create a board goal, would that be on our superintendent's job description, or what, would be in there? I was wondering how that works.
I, I think from my understanding of board goals, board goals are a little different than district goals, and in Antiora, I think typically we have district goals. We don't necessarily have board goals. In order for us to consider writing board goals, I, I do feel like we would need some training on that, because it's not something that, I don't know, Trustee Story, have you done board goals before?
We do board goals. We do a board goal here that this, we did numerous board goals here, and then the superintendent adopts that and makes that her goals off of ours, but we have always adopted the board goals that superintendent has.
So I think for, for this particular initiative as an example, potentially the board goal would be that the board would support the, the long-term plan, and, and then there could be another goal or a sub-goal about supporting, creating a positive interrelated culture, and then we would, at the administrative level, get more specific in our goals for the school year. So, you know, we could obviously talk about that in the next school year, but we're aware that, that that is a, an issue of importance.
Thank you, and I guess I just want to say again, I don't, I do see this as part of our long-term plan. I think that was very clearly laid out, so, and that is our goal for the year, our board goals is around the long-term plan. My question that sparked that was just then, how do we help, again, offer that support and space to be able to ensure that both educational excellence and culture are being addressed? And that was the, that was the intention of the discussion.
And I do, I do think that just the fact that we're having this conversation is kind of what we do, you know, that we're making some really positive suggestions and, you know, encouraging, you know, for some of that to, to happen as, as it can. I know that a lot of those types of things are budgetary concerns, and schools have budgets, and, and it all comes out of the general budget, so as, as things like that can happen, then it would be great. And, and I do, I agree with what Trustee Mitchell Morrell said. I just know from being involved, you know, either as an employee at the district or now as a board trustee and a grandparent, that it's like, we know kids from all over the district. It's not, we're not, we're not just exclusive to the town that we live in, and I, and I think that's really a positive. So we, we can just hope to build on that. Trustee Story?
Just to go back to the board goals real quick, usually you only have the board goals, you do that at the beginning of the year, and you don't, you work on them throughout the year, you don't do a board goal at the end, almost the end of the, of the end of the board term or whatever you want to call it, but usually because the goals you work throughout the whole year. It's not something you do towards the end of a, a board year.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Well, I thought, first of all, that we sort of think this falls under our original board goal, so it's not like we're creating a new board goal, we're just following through, maybe you guys interpret it differently, but it, I see how it is our current board goal. The other thing I wanted to say, I don't want to speak for Sarah, but I think another thing she may be saying is that we're focusing a lot on academic stuff and maybe infrastructure, and maybe we just don't want the social part to fall by the wayside, because it's so important, especially for young teens. I had one more thing to say, but I forgot.
It'll come back. Any, anything else on this? And, you know, I'm grateful for the conversation, and it was a discussion. We don't have to agree or disagree or vote on anything at the moment. And Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Also, just to agree with what you said, President Bishop, which is that, like, just having the conversation is almost enough, like, you know, let's say a PTA member is listening, and then in September they plan an event, like, we're not doing that, thankfully, but, you know, having the conversation is the work in a way.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, great, thank you. So we are going to go back to five, yep, five point zero one. Our student rep is here, Sophia Odato. Do you have a report for us? Welcome, by the way. for us? Welcome, by the way.
Okay. All right. So, recently in student government, we are continuing to discuss our mule contest, getting that running, and also the stuff we need to take to get our outdoor classroom functional by the spring. Throughout the high school, students are excited for spring. Spring sports are preparing for their first competitions. Track had a home meet today against Ellenville. High school yearbook club is set to submit to publishers by the end of April, and yearbooks will be delivered to students at the end of the year. This week, presenters from Ulster County Crime Victims Assistance Program will be coming into PE classes to teach about healthy relationships and teen dating violence. Their presentation will focus on red flags in relationships, signs of abuse, and the prevalence of violence in relationships. I think it's like a really important and impactful thing to be learning about in, in high school. And I feel like it's, it's not really talked about as much as it should be. On a different note, the senior class had a very successful Pancake Breakfast fundraiser this past Saturday at the Deed Stadium Diner. We made over a thousand dollars, so thank you to everyone who supported. The Krispy Kreme fundraiser put on by the junior class just came to an end, and they closed, and they sold close to four hundred boxes of doughnuts. So, congratulations to them. Lastly, prom is fast approaching, and it'll be on May 31st. Thank you.
Any questions for Sophia? Thanks for your report. I, I'm really glad they're, they're covering that topic. Infazet, that's really great. Good news. Okay, on to item point nine, 9.01. The board will acknowledge publicly heard comments at the last meeting. We heard from Cara Kalivis, Esther Downton, and Megan Brenner. We do, I don't believe we have, oh yes? Okay, we have a speaker tonight. Let me just, oh, I don't have my words to read. You know, okay, well, so you know that we can't respond, and that we welcome your comments, and we hear everything that you say and take it into consideration. Right. And if you do have any personnel issues at all, please bring those directly to the superintendent. Thanks, Phaedra.
Hi, I'm Phaedra Dagger-Mansion. I've spoken before, you know me. I have a first grader at Phoenisha and a younger one in pre-K, almost in pre-K, late birthday, she'll be in preschool forever at Woodland Playhouse. My husband and I have been writing a publicly heard for like, a week, and I'm actually throwing most of it out the window. I think a lot of people know that we're passionate about this, and then we're having the conversations on the side. And anyone who's watching that we haven't talked to and wants to talk about it, we are invested in this configuration issue. I want to focus on a more important thing to say. So, Principal Bono took my second piece, I'm going to start with that. I did not wear this sweatshirt on purpose, I was actually really embarrassed when I realized I put it on. It's just comfortable. But, the Phoenisha PTA is working really hard, both to make this year extra special and to plan for next year. Right now, as you've heard, we're focusing on a collaboration with Bennett to create the vegetable garden, similar to the garden that's been so meaningful at Phoenisha and just really impactful for the students. So, we're doing this garden build on April 20th and 21st, and could really use support. So, if people, if financial donations are an option, that's awesome. If not, and people can just come out, we can use all the hands we can get. It's a great way. I love these community coming together ideas. It's a great way to do that. And Janice is incredible, our PTA leaders are incredible, and they are working so hard. And we could really use some help. So, I wanted to come up here and give them a shout-out. And our Facebooks, both the Phoenisha and the Bennett PTA Facebooks have the sign-ups. And you can email either one of us as well. So, we hope to see some faces there. But, really what I want to do is express my admiration and appreciation for the Phoenisha staff and teachers. They have been incredible. I mean, there are conversations going on everywhere about all this stuff that's going on, but they're, they're doing it with the kids every day. And I'm, I see them, because I go into the school and I, I help. And, and I also hear first grader nuggets on what's going on. And it's, it's hard to tell what's actually going on from what is shared by a first grader, but it's just been so clear to me, I don't need this. It's been so clear to me that she feels like cared for and, and looked out for, and they are just being so thoughtful about what will help the kids in this change. And their jobs were not easy before, and this is just on top of it. And it's really, it's just so impressive. So, I wanted to say that here, in front of all of you and everyone watching, because I just think that it can't be said enough, and in enough places. And really, really appreciate them. So, thank you, and I'll be back.
Thank you, Phaedra. Anybody else? Okay. I, I only said that as a joke, because there's nobody else here. So, it's time for us to take a break. So, it will take about ten minutes. We'll be back.
Okay, we are back from our break and we're on to item 12.01, approval of the consent agenda. The Board of Ed hereby approves consent agenda items 12.02 through 12.10. May I have a first? Trustee Story, second? Trustee Jerome, any comments or questions, statements? Great, thank you for reviewing Schedule U, that's great. And we will -- that's why I repeated what you said.
Nine years, never happened before.
We'll vote on the consent agenda. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Great, that's unanimous. Just wanted to comment on, one of the items on the consent agenda was a list of donations, very, very generous donations to the district for our students, and we just want to state how much we appreciate those donations. Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
I was wondering where did the donations go towards?
That we, on the, on the agenda, there's actually a grid on page, well, it says page three, okay, mine is, oh yeah, page two and three. But they go to a number of different scholarships and, you know, just different, one of them is for, which is not on that grid, I don't believe, is for lumber, for the garden build, and they're, they're just really spectacular donations. Did you want to say something?
I was, you actually said what I was going to share, which is that each, each intended purpose is listed on the agenda.
And just Cindy, 12.03 is the donation for the lumber.
Right, yes, I know, I saw that, yeah, so great.
One thing that I forgot to ask you when you were looking at the website, and I think you mentioned that it is there, but, you know, if I want to know more about the Henry Boucher Memorial Award, how do, how do I know what that is, or where do I go and look at that, or Joe Patralla, or whoever?
We do have a page that lists how to donate to the school. I don't believe it lists all of the scholarship awards, those are all scholarship awards, so those are awarded each year to our graduating seniors. And each year at the award ceremony, the program details the intention of each award and the, the description of the students who were eligible for that award. And some are focusing on academics, some are focusing on community service or civic engagement, some are related to a love for the outdoors. There's really a broad, broad range of scholarships available for our students.
So if I wanted to give money to support our students in their futures and I, where would, and I wanted to maybe focus on children who are interested in pursuing music or the arts, how would I find out, how would I know which one of these I should, would I talk to you, or?
So if you were interested in doing that, if you looked on our website, on the very far right, on the Community Resources tab, there's actually a page titled Information on Community Donations.
Thank you.
And that includes information for donating for the middle school, high school, for scholarships, for clubs, we've included the Booster Club, we also have links and information related to each of the PTAs, and then anyone who wants to make an additional, a donation that doesn't fall into any of those categories, there's also information there for that.
Thank you.
You're so welcome.
Okay, onward. We are up to item 13.01, approval of contracts. The Board hereby approves item numbers 13.02 through 13.10. May I have a first? Trustee Goodrich, second, trustee Story, any questions or comments? All right, we'll vote. Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell? Trustee, trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Great, that's unanimous, thank you. Onward we have some policies to discuss. We have the first reading of policy 5330, which is budget transfers. First reading of policy 5322, district-owned cellular phones. 14.03, first reading of policy 5510, fiscal accounting and reporting. 1404 is first reading of policy 5321, use of credit cards. And 1405 is rescind policy 5340, borrowing funds, and 5511, collection of non-sufficient fund, funds check. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education hereby rescinds policies 5340 and 5511. And that just means that we are charged with reading the first, the first readings of all those other policies, and then we will vote on them at our next meeting. So may I have a first for rescinding 5511 and 5340? Trustee Lynch, second, trustee Story, any questions or comments? So we'll vote, trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Story?
Aye.
Okay, great, that's unanimous. And we are up to committee reports. Any committees wish to report? Trustee Lynch?
Sure, the Communications Committee met on the first Wednesday of the month, and we proposed, we brought the ideas forward from the Board to just make sure that everybody has visibility on the role of the committee and what we're trying to do, and where they, we need more input and ultimately approval for anything that we, that we do. So one of the outputs of the committee has been these briefs, and I think they've been well received. So we did provide some advice to the BOSI's colleagues who are helping us put them together, that we, that they remain succinct. So we went through and edited it as, with that in mind, but the content was all something we all agreed with, and then we, as you know, forwarded it around to everybody and everyone agreed it was fine. But going forward, we're very happy to also solicit more input into the content itself, and just wanted to ask that we'd get that kind of input before the first Wednesday of the month, so that we can still have a productive meeting, and then we can pass it on as draft, final draft to each of you to continue to approve it.
Great, thank you, can I, I'd like to add something. One thing that Holly Brucker is our consultant from BOSI's, and she's the person, one of the people, one of the two people that are supporting this work that we're doing with the Communications Committee, and she's brought it up before, but she really kind of was a little more clear this time about her, her advice to us from a PR perspective, I think, and community service perspective, that we attend as many community events, school district events, that we possibly can to really become more visible. And so I actually made a list, and I did send my list to our district clerk, Amanda Gates, to kind of just compile the list, and she's going to send that out to all the board trustees, and it just includes things like homecoming, High School Musical, the middle school Shakespeare play, Olive Day. Holly has encouraged us to try coffees with board trustees, like having a coffee clutch, you know, kind of thing. You know, we've, I think that has been attempted in the past, and it's never really worked. So, you know, but, you know, never say never. Sporting events, obviously, from youth league through varsity. Concerts, PTA events, like the Woodstock Holiday Fair, or the Spring Plant Sale, community playground build, and now the garden, the Bennett Garden Build, the Meet, Greet and Eat, and local farmers markets, even if we wanted to set up our tent, like we've done a few times recently, especially to generate more, more interest in getting our communications, our emails and everything. So those are just some ideas, I'm sure there's a lot more that I didn't think of, or that we didn't think of, we kind of brainstormed some of those in the meeting. But, you know, just, if you can, you know, show up at, at events, and I think, you know, people are, we're elected officials, people appreciate seeing us out there. Trustee Lynch?
Just to add to that, one thing that she also mentioned, if it's useful to you to think about is, what other districts do is they, you know, they are much more visible, but also with intentionality, so you might want something to hand out, or a paper, or even she suggested a button that says, like, "I'm a board member, ask me questions," like that kind of a thing. So it's just, it's just something to be thinking about, because I think we all are often going to events, but going to events intentionally with your board hat on, essentially, and I think that's the difference.
Right, trustee Story?
It's going to events where it's not, you're, you're not there as a parent, you're going there at the Colonial Fourth Grade Fair, or you're doing stuff, this is what board members are supposed to be doing this whole time, and this isn't, you know, you're supposed to be going to the concerts and the musicals and the sporting events throughout this, just on top of your, this is part of your board duty to event, to attend these things.
Great, Amanda, did you catch that, the Colonial Fair? Um, oh, maybe they're not. Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
So, for example, if I'm getting the same question around town, would that be something I would email to the Communications Department and see if you want to address that in your newsletter, or FAQs?
Well, maybe the FAQs, or you could suggest to the, the folks that are asking you questions that they submit an FAQ, and then, oh, what was the other, I forgot what I was going to say. Yeah, it's not to the Communications Committee, it's, it's for the whole board, or it's, you know, send, send a question to, to our email address.
And the other thing, I just wanted to clarify, you're going to send a list of the events? Okay, great.
I just wanted to reiterate, say about the meet the board, or the coffee with the board, and coffee with the superintendent, we've tried them, and they've, people have never showed up. We've sat, we've been there, and we've gone out to the community, different places, and so that's one that generally doesn't work around here, but...
I think, I totally appreciate that, trustee Story. I, I think the suggestion was, again, like, to go where people already are, but to be present and be available, to help with some of our goals, just around better communication, being transparent, being available, so that it, it could even be something like, instead of a coffee shop, it could be at, you know, pickup. It could be like where parents are, or where communities congregate, or where staff congregate, like, just being more intentional about that, so that we are available and able to answer questions if they come up, or just hold conversation, or get to know each other.
Assistant Superintendent Allison?
Might I suggest, at the wonderful Meet, Greet and Eat, coming up May 6th, from 5:30 to 7:30, at our middle school, high school. If the Board would like to have a table, if you guys would like to let me know, I can certainly have you guys there as a vendor, and you can have information there about the budget, or whatever you, you'd like to do. It is the same night as the, but if there are some members that wanted to kind of divide and conquer, we can certainly use that as an opportunity, we're hoping to get a good number of participants. Just to plug, May 6th, 5:30, 7:30.
Thank you, good suggestion. Anybody else, any, any other committee reports? It's obvious the Policy Committee's been working.
Just to say, yes, we did meet, and you were, either you were sick or a child was sick, and then tonight, obviously trustee Ramondo is not well, so I'm happy to give an overview, but I think you see, we just reviewed multiple policies, and, and we will continue to do that, to update our policy handbook.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on, any old business? Any new business? Trustee Story?
Actually, this might, this is kind of new business and a request for information from the superintendent. We've had the discussion over and over again about, so I've seen recently there's a change.org petition going on, that some residents of the Kingston School District would like to join the Antioora School District. We've said there's, there's a process that has to be followed, and at the Board Table, we haven't really had this discussion, but it's something that's, keeps popping up over and over again. So this is my request of you, is could you reach out to the superintendent of Kingston and see if he would be, even, if they would be even, he would allow, they would allow to get rid of some of their tax properties? You know, if some of our, some of their students could come to Antioora. Could you engage in a discussion with the superintendent, see if this is even possible or plausible?
I can ask, I'm not sure that he would be willing necessarily to give me a response, since I'm not one of the parties who would be officially asking. And so it, it may be that they need to follow the process and go to the Kingston Board, but as you noted, I have, I've been contacted by two separate individuals, and I have shared the information about the process, and anyone who wants to petition to, to change school districts has to, the properties all have to be contiguous to our district, it can't be properties that are in Kingston but not necessarily touching our border. The Kingston District has to approve it, our district would have to approve it, and then the Commissioner would also have to approve it. And there are two sets of rules, there are rules for transferring properties between central school districts, but this is different because Kingston is actually a city school district. So if it were central school district to central school district, it would not require the Commissioner's approval, it would require the local BOSI's approval, but because it's a city school district, it would require the Commissioner's approval. So the people who have inquired, I have provided that information. I can ask, but as I said, I may not get an official response, because it's not really an official request, because I'm not the party that would be impacted.
But it's something that we, as a district, can have and say, okay, this is, we've engaged this with the, this superintendent, and this is what there is, but this is, you, this, you need to do this yourselves, but just so the district has an understanding, we know there's a process, but this is what we're, you know, working through.
And I have provided the individuals who asked with the superintendent's contact information, and told him that I have been contacted by these individuals with this intention, so that he is aware that those conversations have been happening in our district.
Thank you.
Any other new business, trustee Goodrich?
So I was wondering if maybe in a future board meeting, let me back up. So as Superintendent McLaren just showed, the webpage soaring to new heights, optimizing Antioora, and off that is frequently asked questions list, and I encourage the community to, to go through that, if they haven't already. There's a, a new item there that was just added recently, and it's, it's great, why a central campus? And I get that question a lot in my community, and, because we don't understand why. So there's 15 bullets there, and I would, I guess I'm asking if the superintendent would be willing to go through those 15 bullets at some point in, in the future, to better describe. There's a few of them that I, I don't know, you know, what they are, so I think it would be good to, to go over it, it's an important list. I think the Communications Committee did a great job, and it'd be nice to have a better explanation, I think, over some of them.
Trustee Goodrich, are you asking that, that she, like, present it as a presentation, and kind of open it up for discussion with the Board?
Yes, that'd be good.
Okay. I have something, I wanted to bring this up to the Board, and, and it's a lot, it's a big deal, and, but I, I'm asking for the Board to consider it. And initially, a couple weeks ago, I got very interested in the possibility of Antioora, of us, us as a school board, writing a diversity, equity, and inclusion resolution. And so I started doing a lot of research on it, and I found, there's a ton of information, as you would expect, and so I just printed out a few things at home, and I'm, and Amanda is passing them out. The first page is just a joint statement on diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, and it is co-signed and co-authored by the President of the, of NISBA, the President of the New York State Council of School Superintendents, the Chairperson of the Council of Big Five School Districts, and the Board of Directors of the Rural Schools Association. The next document is an actual Board Resolution, and I really liked this one, because it's not just diversity, equity, and inclusion, but it's diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And this one is from the Pleasantville, Pleasantville Union Free School District, and there, like I said, about really anything about DEI, there's a multitude of information online, if you're interested in doing the research. And then the last piece is a, the NISBA sample policy around DEI. And so when I said that it's a lot of work, I think that the way that these kind of resolutions and, and initiatives happen, is that a task force, or a, an ad hoc committee, or something like that, is, is typically created, including, you know, maybe a board member, members of the community, teachers, and absolutely students. And, and so if you take the time to read the resolution, and read the, the sample policy, you'll see that it, it's very, very involved. So it is something that, that I think is important, as we move forward as educators in education, and in a, in a divided political environment, in a divided, like, right now our community is even divided, and I do think that, that something like this assures for our students that, that they're getting the, the best and most accurate and most caring our students that, that they're getting the, the best and most accurate, and most caring and, and considerate education that they can get, and, and challenging. So there's, I could throw a lot of adjectives on that. But anyway, it's something to think about, and if there's interest in it, we could discuss it at a, at a future board meeting. Trustee Lynch?
Thank, thank you for raising this, and I'm just reminded of trustee DeJesus's work, I believe. Daphne DeJesus, I believe, also put a resolution together for Antiora on diversity, equity, and inclusion. I'd volunteer to reach out to her, or look it up in our board docs, but I'm, I'm recalling that from maybe three years ago or so. Might just be something to build from.
We'll take a look. Any other questions or comments? Trustee Story?
This is more about what you were saying about, that you want to do a board resolution, and, but then you also talked about getting a community thing, because I'm, you got me so confused right now. Because a board resolution is written by the board itself, it's our resolution, we don't have a community come in to, you know, do that. So if it's a board resolution, then we, the board, would work that out at the board table, you know, we, that's how we do that in the past, so, but I, like, the community aspect, that's where you're, like, confusing.
I, I think that in some cases, the community is consulted on things as, this is a big D, you know, it's a, it's a big thing. So it's, it's, it's something that you would want to draw from the people that are kind of in the trenches, like students and teachers, before it is written into a, a resolution and made, you know, like, you know, it's, it's a, it's a legal document then. So, it depends on the district. A lot of districts have a committee, and it's not just the board working on it, especially in terms of the policy and the, the, oh, what comes after a policy? The, the regulation.
Then maybe a board resolution is not the right terminology to use for this, because a resolution is, the board is the one that is doing that. That's what, we're not, it's the board that is composing the resolution.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just throwing it out there that I'd like to pursue this if, and well, we should talk about it more after people do some homework. Anything else about that? Okay. Thanks for listening, everyone. Onto requests for information. Trustee Jerome?
First, thank you for putting that together. It'll be interesting to start wrapping our head around that. I am wondering whether there is a district-wide, I have no visibility into homework, and how that is, are there standards? Are there requirements? Is that decided by the teacher, or the school, or the grade level? I would love to know a little bit more about that, as I do get asked about that. Strangely, more often, people want more homework, you know, so, or, I don't know, I mean, I don't know. But in any case, if I could get some brief, like, just, or the board, I should say, some overview of how that works, that would be super.
Sure. We have a homework policy, but I believe homework is also addressed in our student handbooks at the elementary level, and then the middle, high school, I'm not sure if it's in the handbooks, I can't remember off the top of my head, but I'm, I'm seeing heads shake yes. So, but we can gather all of that and provide it for you.
Trustee Story?
The, the, we, as a board, the former board, has had numerous discussions on homework, and there is a lot of information in board docs for you to go back on to and look in there also.
Oh, great. Well, it would be great to have, you know, what can be pulled from just what we know right now, I think definitely looking beyond just the element, the school that my child is, and I'm more interested in the district as a whole, and glad to hear that this has been a topic that, you know, that people are obviously interested in, so, great. Can't wait to start that with this version of the board.
Great, thank you. Any other requests for information? Trustee Story, would you like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? May I have a second? Trustee Mitchell Morrell? All in favor? Aye.